Morning, everyone. I can have you all stand. Have a moment's time of prayer and then we'll get started.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the April fifteenth meeting.
I'll second. Hold those in favor.
I'll make a motion to accept plans one through one ninety-seven, six hundred and one thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and ten cents. unpublished plans and payroll plan.
I'll second. Hold those in favor. Report to action that's submitted for the Andaman supporters and Sheriff, or Rachel.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second, hold those in favor. Review and acknowledge the transfer of bank or consultation monthly comparison report. Second, hold those in favor. Graveling subdivision. Roger, do you?
Oh, Jason Stark. You want me to do it?
Yeah, go.
Okay. Graveling subdivision is a subdivision that Mr. Reitl is building along Graveling and it goes to the back. Back fields. There are three new roads that come off of Graveling. The long one is Red Oak and it's fourteen hundred seventy-six feet long and it terminates into a cul-de-sac. And then out of that, there is White Oak, which is two hundred and thirty-nine feet, and Borough, which is two hundred and twenty-three feet long. Mr. Reitl had submitted a request for the county to accept these roads once construction is complete. The roads are, I discussed the design with Jason, the roads are going to be at a minimum twenty feet wide, which allows ten-foot lanes each way. They will have gravel shoulders and they are asphalted. Mr. Reitl has already asphalted Graveling. When he purchased the property, Graveling is included in his property. He was unaware that it was on the county list of roads. After he had asphalted and did the improvements, which the neighbors are happy with, he found out that it was actually on the county records but has not been maintained. And I believe, I won't speak for Jason, but I think from my conversation with him, he didn't have any issues with the improvements. But at this point, Mr. Reitl is requesting that the new roads get accepted by the county upon completion of construction. We're all talking like a free taste of the wine. That they have a report, so. Nothing, nothing major.
I checked everything. Everything looks fine. And brand-new asphalt, brand-new asphalt, six inches of subbase, compacted subbase. I mean, it's designed to.
Are available, but.
Here's that going to camp one. So getting back that field on these coal mine and all that.
Ask me an answer.
There's farmland back there. There's cattle back at the end of that road and stuff like that. Is that? Do you want to, is he not going to be allowed to get back there and farm background because his equipment's too heavy on that blacktop?
If there's an easement for the farmer to get to that.
Through that road.
Through Graveling, then that easement will be honored. I mean, there are no extinguishments.
I don't know if it's an easement or not.
I mean, typically to get to a parcel, you either have your own, you own the lane or you have an easement across that lane.
Well, he doesn't own the land with rents on him.
Well, the owner, whoever owns that land would either have full ownership of the, the access to the property or an easement to that property. Either way, whatever sits there and exists today, nothing is getting extinguished. So if he, if the farmer always uses Graveling, then yes, he needs to be able to use Graveling.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think what he was maybe getting at is that our farmer that's back there, he has the easement and the right to go across it. And we want to improve it by putting asphalt and appropriate subbase. And he's worried about the weight. What I would be worried about for the farmer is to make sure that, let's just take Saturday. It was a hot day. And he went back there to fill that ground. And his tractor went back there and the plates on the tractor wrapped up that concrete. Make sure that farmer is not going to be held liable to repair that damage that was done to that asphalt. While he was just using his easement to get back there. I think it's great to improve it so that it's better for residents. But to try to make sure that we don't make our farmer be in a situation where he's held liable for unintentional damage. That it was just a hot day when he went back there. Because, you know, we've all seen it on blacktop roads. If it happens, they get chewed up a bit, you know, especially if they're probably going back there with tracks. On track tractor, it makes that a turn and makes that a pivot. It'll wrap that up. Just want to make sure we don't, not leave them in a situation where they're, they're being held liable just to get to their land.
Well, that's, that's a great point. Once, once the county takes on these roads, they become part of the county road system. So the farmer having damage on that road or any other county road would be similar. It would be treated similarly. If the county had a department that looked there that, you know, today, if a farmer destroys part of a road on a hot day, you know, the county's not going to go say, it's your fault. Go fix it. We just fixed it, you know? That would be no different. So we can just county roads.
I'll make a motion to accept the Graveling subdivision. Flat, one, two.
Okay, I'll second. Hold those in favor. There are local agreements for nine-one-one. And this is expanding. What we started with Warren County.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I have a question. Did you renegotiate the contract to allow for any extra expenses that were incurred during the first year?
No.
Not at that time, not at this time. We, we had discussed about doing a two-year average. At the time that we agreed to extend it, we weren't aware of our costs. It was after we had communicated with Warren County that we're.
The way we negotiated that, Kelly, was we were going to go on our own anyhow with nine-one-one. So we would have had one hundred percent of cost.
No, I just.
So we initially started out with, I think, I think the initial offer to Warren County was in the one below two hundred thousand.
Right.
And then in the end, it's three hundred and seventy-five, it's three hundred and seventy-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Three seventy. So they went, they came all the way up to three seventy. So, I mean.
Which was close at the time, fifty-fifty, because that was, the sheriff wanted fifty-fifty. I was in favor of fifty-fifty. Because both counties was going to have to have a dispatch center. And so we thought that was only there or we were going to go on our own.
So after this first, after we've done it for the first year, do we know an actual cost? Do we have an actual cost figure?
Yeah, for the first year, we spent seven hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Half of that would be three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and thirty-six.
So there's, that's about right in mind and what you guys were thinking?
Yeah, our contacts for three twenty-five. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
But we spent how much?
Total, seven hundred and forty-one thousand. So half was, what you said, half is three hundred and seventy. And we did just buy, we just buy some software. Yes, which that would be on next. Okay, next bill. So, because.
Again, our original agreement was we were going to go on our own if they didn't come along. So we would have been paying the whole thing. It's a blessing. They're, they're paying the three, whatever they're paying.
If we decided that nine-one-one annex, will they be responsible for any of the equipment? You know, which did a fifty-fifty.
Yeah, and it's just, they have a blacktop. Warren County will renegotiate it next year. We thought the first two years, we just leave the same. They were happy with that. We're happy with that. So we renegotiated.
I'm not really heard them saying no. They wouldn't like right now, but moving forward, depending, you know, because we are having quite a bit of software.
We've always worked well with Warren County. They'll, they'll understand. We just show them our prices and I'm sure that they'll work with us.
Yeah.
This year, we're just going to sign the contract. We go on, make a settlement.
Well, we have some software too that wasn't being updated yet. We were paying for all these years and no one was doing anything about it. Meaning the nine-one-one director. Will be the other one. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I just need to make a question.
On the floor, please.
I'll second.
Sign the line of agreement.
The Kellys will stay in contact with Warren County. If we're aware of similar equipment expenses happening to. John and I have been in contact.
I can't imagine if it's going to be a large instance that they wouldn't.
Yeah, and that, and that's what they said. Yeah, they said, we, you know, we don't want you to not be involved. So we are trying to work together. Okay, thank you. Ordinance for establishment of the Fountain County Drainage Board. And ordinance was introduced at the last meeting.
Yeah, the only blank to fill in, and I guess at this point, Drainage Board's appointees, so this is appointing a separate drainage board of two county citizens that have knowledge of agriculture and drainage and agribusiness. And one commissioner, form a three-person board to oversee the county surveyor, which is the county hasn't had an elected surveyor since nineteen eighty. By statute, you have a contract surveyor, which is Mr. Azar. The only variable in the ordinance that was introduced, that's drafted in the statute, allows the commissioners to have an ordinance that pays the members of a stipend, the citizen member, not the city commissioner, that pays those members a stipend. In addition, by, by statute, you have to reimburse them for their expenses if they are driving to and from meetings or driving to and from fields to evaluate drainage conditions. That has to be reimbursed. So I'd recommend at this point that we just strike the stipend until we can get a handle on the, how easy it is to get members to serve and the time and expense that they have in it. We, since that's discretionary, you just strike that portion of that clause and improve it to form a a three-member separate drainage board, drainage board to administer the county's drainage program.
So at what point could we amend that to possibly? Because I know there's, Wells County, I think they pay even their commissioner that's on that board.
So, so can I do? You can amend it at your discretion at any time.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to a motion to pass the ordinance.
Before you, before you make the ordinance, why was the consideration to go from a five-member building to a three-member board?
Well, right now, it's, it's optional under statute. Two different bodies can administer the drainage, the drainage law. One is the county commissioners and the second is either a three-member drainage board made up of one commissioner and two citizens or a five-member drainage line, one commissioner and four citizens. So I don't know when Fountain County ever had a, I couldn't find any evidence of an ordinance that had ever been administered by any other, any separate body other than commissioners. It was substantially dormant until about twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen when the commissioners started employing Mr. Azar to start looking into the drains and identifying current operational drains and, and the historical record of the drainage. Drains. Fountain County has about more than two hundred and fifty active drains under the drainage law. Fountain County has a handful that are active. Some of them have gone dormant between the eighties and twenty nineteen. And just in the process, just to, they've made significant progress to identify the the watersheds as they exist now and mapping from years ago. And the commissioners have taken it as far as they can. And much of, we've already kind of went through this several years ago. It's just reached critical mass where it's time to form a separate board and just the baby steps. Again, when the three-person board, given the difficulties of finding people to conserve and then operate with the three-person board, the commissioners, if it's becoming if it really gets up and running, the commissioners' discretion, they go up to the chief of.
I just know that like my father, which is my family's farm, when it comes to the point of generating, it cuts, it cuts right to the middle of it. And I know in the seventies and eighties, when I was a child, I know that my father participated on the drainage board. And at that time, they were five members in the seventies. Because I can remember doing an meeting because a lot of those open drains had to be dredged at that time. And there was tax exception that was levied on to do those. And I know that in the eighties, there was a lot of conflict about who was taking for what. For when the old concrete drains, the big rains were blowing and there was lots of big rain that was popping out in fields very quick. Also, I do know that historically in the past, you know, fifty years ago, half a century ago, there, there was a five-member board that, that did oversee that. And, and I kind of feel I personally as a as a owner, this has got an open drain going through there that I think when we agriculture members and people that are involved with the drain itself, those seats need to be felt by people that are actively it's addressing their, their, their property directly, but then also from an overview of adding the other citizen members to it as well. I think it needs to be a little broader context of that because, you know, we still have the old concrete drains. We're still doing blowholes. I know we, my neighbor, when he was alive, I was helping him repair blowholes across from that in Malice Township. So I think it's something that's necessary, but I want to also make sure that we get appropriate representation from the people in Fountain County.
Okay, well, I don't have a problem with that. And I, as Kent said, it's been three commissioners on his board. And we've been trying to address some of the inactive drains. And so he's been doing work on that. And I think if we can amend this resolution, I am okay with a three-member board and then let them decide if they want to have two. Can we do that?
You, you, the commissioners can change it to a five-person board at your discretion.
So, Tim, you made a motion to accept.
Twenty twenty-four dash one, establishing Fountain County Drainage Board. My motion.
Yes. Okay, I'll second. Hold those in favor. And then we can review that. And if we want to add side evidence and add more members, I will certainly, you know, listen to noise on that, see how the work goes. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight, this is a resolution of the county commissioners authorizing the execution and submission of agreement with NDOT. Giving the highway superintendent, Jason Lewis, the authority to execute and submit agreements with NDOT. I don't see many matters.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight.
I'll second. Hold those in favor. At this time, I think we need to, our heads, Jason, did you not send?
Been this guy, Jay, David Eisenberg, HWC engineer here today, just we had got some bids over two bridges on Foster Road from USI Consulting. Wanted to get a couple more bids from a couple more engineering firms, just to kind of check some balances in there. They're here just to try and introduce themselves. Going to an on-call contract if necessary. I have a piece of information I'm waiting to get, those two bridges. And I can present to you and the council advice of what's going to come from these two.
So you want us to act on that for our next meeting then?
When we can, or I'll be, it can give some information on the on-call contract. Well, I guess it was just like what we've done with.
I mean, sometimes on the on-calls, they'll have a they'll just have a, their rates.
Yes.
Is that what it's going to be? Or is it going to be not to exceed a certain dollar amount?
Yes, so with what Jason and I have discussed, I'm working, so hello, Jake Weiss, our regional museum, construction engineering department there. I've been there for about eleven years. So what's that? Like Jason said, you have to make, provide a price, a value to him, a copy of our general services agreement retainer that we use for HWC to serve as a, as needed requested assignment basis. I currently work in White County and then for about ten years with House of Virginia, like Kyvers, for reference. Basically, we're presided with Jason at the same basis. With those retainers, anything on call, it's not literally written table, but mentioned, specific for these bridges is more of the dollar threshold exceeding ten thousand dollars presented. Those are, would be individually assigned separate agreement that's underneath the retainer. Then I can give you all, I can give you the contract he sent to me. So I can present that at the next meeting. But just wanted to bring him in and then just to introduce yourself and we're good to go on on call. I, I heard we are going to be opening bids for the community crossings grant. We're on June third now. So that commissioners meeting will be opening this without a restraint on the road. We're, we're getting ready to start playing for the next week's.
It's the young man with you. He looks thrilled.
Morning, business. Recently have joined HWC. I know a few people from, out of Warren County. And so just not too far on the road, work with Tim Breden, the mayor here on Reading, some other projects there. So gonna be down here soon.
I'm here. Hi, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
I'm thinking my head. Yes.
A couple of things. One, I found out last Friday, a delivery on our trucks has been pushed back. I'm a little disappointed. I can't figure out why. So I'm working with a representative on that. They're saying now July. So I'm not sure why. They kept telling me May and now it's July. So I'm working on that, trying to figure out why. Hopefully we'll get them before then. The second thing is Josh and I have been working on through the medical supplies, possibly a inventory control system. Basically, it's like a vending machine, but it's for medical supplies. It's through a company where we can put medical supplies in a vending machine, like a vending machine or like a Pixis system. Each person has to access it and then take what they, what they need out of it. They are providing us that there will be a little bit of some cost savings with that. And I think a lot of what that is, is the overstocking of vehicles is where the big thing will help with that. But we're still in the early stages on that. I hopefully have a presentation on that put together for you at the next meeting. I do have an agreement that I'll have to, can't look at just to see if there's anything we need to change with it. But other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go. Is there any other department heads that?
Glendale. Greg and I did inspection on the landfill last week. There's a couple of rutted areas where we was trying to roll the landfill and it was wetter than it should have been. He's going to address those with, with the maintenance funds that he has. They're typical, you know, bringing so impacted and just, we see some of the areas that are a little bare. We did an inspection with item about a month and a half ago and they noted a couple of bare areas that need to be fixed. So we're gonna he's going to proceed in doing both of those and get the landfill back compliant to what it needs to be. It's, it's minor minor maintenance items, but Greg wanted to put it on the table so you guys know what he's doing.
I think things are going very well, you know, with our installations, but it's.
And he's doing a good job at that mine. He really is. And, and he continues to do a good job, but he just felt like he needs to put it out there so you guys know what he's going to be doing.
Anybody else? Any other department heads? Well, we'll move on to the back page. I have a, I have a very good bird library appointment. So I need a motion to appoint Sam McBride from May seventh through December thirty-first.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Hold those in favor. Again, we're kind of a congressional school fund to the secretary of education. That's May first, twenty twenty-three through April thirtieth of this year. Looks like the interest firm was six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. In the congressional. Yes, that breakups in interest. The payment was in a while. Okay, so that was, they would three schools amount, one thousand fifty-three dollars and ten cents. So we need that.
Is that going to school or?
I don't know what the breakdown is of.
I, I just said it's a little over a hundred dollars. At one school gets two hundred, I think, constant tickets. Because it's based on enrollment. You have to sign it. So.
I'll make a motion to approve congressional school funds.
Okay, I'll second. Hold those in favor. Additional requests, this county general, plant commission consulting fees, fifteen thousand dollars. MBH restricted, the laborers, nine thousand five hundred. Tier bridge, the bridge crew, three thousand five hundred dollars, assistant supervisor, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. MBH fund supervisor, nine thousand, laborers, eighty-nine thousand thirty dollars. M D H fund supervisor, nine thousand, laborers, eighty nine thousand thirty dollars. Shop foreman, two thousand five hundred dollars and a mechanic, six thousand dollars, and this is all due to the raises.
Correct, yes, except for consulting fees.
Right.
Um I might add, I'm I'm not sure fifteen thousand is gonna do it, especially if we're gonna be working on the. Trains and things. So could I do that type of money?
Uh why you're.
Oh, I thought maybe you were gonna be playing the odd bill. What what are you guys think? I it may five thousand might do it, not do it, cause I've already transferred some money and it's. It's not, well, I guess this is more on zoning and the ordinances and things. Um I've transferred. Five thousand from attorney to consulting and we're already in the red.
Okay, I was I was just. Twenty five. And I do have a question. Um I don't know if we're at that point, but the community crossing. Grant that um I'm doing for this grand town road, our portions in five hundred thousand. Um other counties are using M D H restricted. I've got it as their matches, so you need appetize for that?
Yes, it needs.
Can we do, we do that motion here?
You can if you want, yes.
Can I add to it? Okay. I mean, while you're unless you have some others that you're holding on to. Or your order.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, I need that. So what's added to the M D H restricted, five hundred thousand? Dollars, and that's the county's match for the C C N G. It's a two million dollar project. I think so.
I'll make a motion to accept additional requests with the twenty five thousand dollar. Uh by commission. Um change and the five hundred thousand dollar M G H restraint change.
What was the favor?
Aye.
Okay, the transfers from bridge two oh two to the county match um. Although that we can't we can't transfer them down. Right, we can't transfer them down to.
Well, there are. State or county says you can take the county match. This is with the federal bridge.
Okay.
It's our portion.
Okay, I always thought it. I didn't know if you knew this to make a motion for you to cut it. Check for that.
Well, basically, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, so it's not a ledger, no frank transfer. Okay, so maybe unless, I mean, if you talk to state with the council, but I've always been led to believe you can't transfer from bun to bun.
Okay, we'll cut a check and put it in there, so.
Is is that correct? Can I, I mean, I will double check with them.
Generally, I think you're right, but.
Okay.
Just depends on.
But I just want to make sure the the wording is correctly, so um I have no problem with her cutting a check, you know. From a link thirty eight bridge to a two, then. Basically depositing final nine one twenty five for our match. Essentially, we get a lot of them.
I'll I'll make a motion to approve the transfer, send to the council.
Okay, I thought I just made that motion, but okay.
Oh, I'll second. I'm sorry.
Okay. Right, you're used to making the motion, all those favor.
Aye.
Okay, um yeah, on their part of the plan. Those are.
We have um. We need to. Um appropriate the rest of the money for that plan. Otherwise, if it's not appropriate by December thirty first, we're gonna have to pay that back.
I thought it's generally not appropriated.
Um.
Was three hundred one dollars.
Two hundred eighty seven thousand.
Okay, so the council budgeted if we're twenty twenty four, we just didn't change our article, that's all correct?
No, they the council has. On the plan, we guys signed was a million dollars, right? We're short uh three hundred and some. Thousand dollars. Three hundred eighty seven thousand.
Okay, I guess what I.
It's four hundred sixty eight thousand, I'm sorry, four hundred sixty eight thousand.
I guess this is what I say to. This figure here, what is? That's what, is that amount only a million and that is budgeted?
Yes.
And then this is what? What's forty forty eight thousand? Actually approved by the council. Why stolen ball?
That was appropriated, but we need to. Update our plan. This is right. We need to update our plan. We need to add this one of sixty eight thousand.
I I just want to make sure we're on set.
Yeah.
To match this number, right?
Yep.
I have no problem with. The council budgeted a larger amount than what our ARCA plan actually said. And that's why I just want to make sure I remember. So you need a motion about us to.
Yeah, we need to update the plan.
Make a motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
No.
I just want to. Uh to what? You have a question?
No, you.
I'll second.
No.
Right.
I thought you were letting me motion. And then I was.
You want me, I'll make the motion that we update the ARCA plan. To figures that Paulie said, so that we're compliant with the state.
Yep.
Okay, and you'll say.
I just didn't understand on motion to pay for sweet under that.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. I don't know, but I will have to talk to Ken for the plan and giving a basic.
Yeah, well. We the update. Is the. The folks that were originally appointed on that, I don't think it was the steering committee or is there a group that met?
It was the commissioner president, the captain president and all of their. Committee.
I've been just follow that process. The three of you should. Talk and and decide what to recommend on how this remaining fund should be spent, then we. Update the the written plan that was approved and have a resolution whenever that plan is ready for the commissioners to formally do that plan.
I I talked with Dudley and I'm sure. None of us want to give back any money.
I didn't.
So he's, so he really didn't have any thought as to where he. Wanted those funds to go because I don't think anybody's approached.
I think it I I'm assuming, here I go. It will go into the annex. So. Okay, because I think the last time we thought that was kind of a mutual assumption. But I will. Double check and then come with my other committee meeting.
So I have a question for you, Ken. If we need to meet, can they do that at the joint meeting that we're discussing about having on the thirteen? Are you still wanting to do that?
Well, I was just in that, the guidelines from the federal government then was supposed to be a separate. By the discusses those things that makes. So I. I that if that's discussed in the course of a a joint meeting, I I just go, I wouldn't want to risk. The like whatever, to whatever extent the best uh audit the spending of our funds. Uh so I my recommendation would just be that separate, however. How it's constituted of Dudley and Brendan Cotton and they they discuss that and they can read, they can report. What they've talked about to the council or to the commissioners.
What I'm what I'm saying is that would make opportunity time for them to meet separately since if we're gonna have a joint meeting on the thirteen.
I mean, we'll be there together. We can.
Yeah, you guys.
Quickly, that is, that's what you're saying. I have some problem with that. We've got to discuss that.
Okay, are we still wanting to do the, as far as I know, um there are several um. Vendors that are coming to answer questions, because I think some of the council had questions, because Jen Visser wanted to have a joint meeting. Um and I'm fine with it, but I just, I need to make sure that we are going to have that so that these people aren't coming and then I. That's kind of why I'm asking if you guys were standing in favor of. Having that on the thirteen.
Because I think discussion was gonna be um. Not just the annex, the courthouse and some of the other county um highway. Projects, but also um the health commission, because I thought part of the Mormon was kind of. The governor's office, so I just admit, I need to make sure all of us are on the same page.
Yeah, exactly.
And I'm running for. Just Tyler. Confirm kind of calling to cut one. I see, okay, this for second, Billy.
Okay.
If needed, if it was needed.
Cause I know he's been in contact, I think, with Dudley. Yeah, that could be.
That's first.
I'm not sure about that, Ian. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have, I don't have anything about it.
So if you want to do the thirteenth meeting, would you like for me to get ahold of Dudley and make sure that is good with him?
That would be great.
My goodness.
Orchardure incoming, um Ameresco, I believe, maybe Envoy will be here.
Jason Semley, Patrick Kelly. Um Barham Norberg.
So. Then well, would you want to do that at a morning meeting or an evening meeting?
Well, originally you have nine o'clock, she's. I don't know, I mean, they're they're planning coming, yeah, they're planning coming nine o'clock.
Okay. All right, I'll get ahold of Dudley then.
Okay.
All right. Okay, do you have anything else to tell me?
No question.
No.
Can I?
I guess at this time I'll open it up for a couple of comments since there's individuals that, you know, wanted to um speak. I ask that um. That you say your name. I'll give you five minutes um to speak and. The gun, I don't know who. Yeah. So Sarah here.
Sarah's son had a motorcycle accident in Florida Saturday and she had to fly down there Saturday night.
The Michael.
I have a sense it's time to choose the chain.
Carol.
Anything? Okay, well, concerned citizens. Is there a representative or concerned citizens or? Carol, I'm sure.
Yeah, what's the normal fact and and through like traveling and subdivision? Um the roads. To my estimation are wide enough. Are they going to increase the width of that?
Um they're gonna be twenty two wide now.
Or you're proved does not state that the county has to make a wide enough?
No, the 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 developer is building on, but are. Part of the conditional approval is that they are at least twenty feet wide.
And then they'll have gravel shoulders, Armin, and he he stated earlier it would have gravel shoulders.
Asphalt, that two hundred foot lanes and then gravel.
So that's where the digits will be?
Uh if there are digits required, yes. Right now, we're we're laying pictures from one side, so the problem with the new bridge could go high, it's high on one side of the road.
And who are the consultants under the plant commission? Roger.
Yeah.
Roger. And how many laborers are gonna get all this extra money?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Now the, we only have one assistant supervisor on the bridge. Oh, you've got quite a.
Most part of here is the service also, Carol.
Okay, so that's included in.
Yes, Travis has been there twenty seven years.
So not all this is uh an increase in their salary?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
So and then at the end of the year, he'll get another one for his services?
No, that that years of service is just a one month pay.
Okay. All the questions.
Okay, Brenda, yes, Devon said he's okay with the joint meeting on the thirteen. Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, um. Representative of the friends in county. I don't know about individual this though. And okay. Bill, I guess you can be unless someone else almost raised their hand.
I am Bill Brewer. I do live two hundred south. Down here, right on the line, we have their wall bass town share by own three hundred and twenty acres of ground. Down dead end road, nobody gave it to me, nobody didn't inherit it, but. It's not our ground, folks, it's my ground. Having said that, I've seen a lot of misinformation put out on the internet. And so I took the time to get a few statistics going myself. C R P ground. This is reserved ground and the government pays people not to farm because we've got too much farm ground in production right now. So everybody's pretty gonna starve because we put in a few acres of solar farm. There's no truth to it. There is twenty one point nine one million acres in C R P. The government exported a hundred and ninety one billion dollars worth of ag products in twenty twenty three to China. And that was a three year low. Okay, this is all surplus grain of all kinds and stuff that we export out of this country. Indiana has fourteen million nine hundred and fifty five. Thousand three hundred and sixty six ag acres. Fountain County has the best I can come up with. A hundred and ninety two thousand and twelve acres of ground. And I could not come up with an accurate figure of how much of that is in CPR. But I can tell you, there are a lot of farms out there that every bit of their till over ground is in C R P ground. And I may say CPA or something else once in a while, but I'm talking about. C R P ground, reserved ground that we have back. That our tax dollars are going, but have not found. So there's no truth to the fact, we're gonna run out of ground and starve to death. All right, I have talked, I called the project manager of Hexagon. Uh solar fields that's interested in putting a farm in down on South Grand Creek Road. People give these folks up here a lot of grief, you know, the truth of the matter is they don't have a lot of the answers because. People that sign these contracts are not allowed to talk about this stuff. So a lot of this conjecture, but I can tell you, you're talking about moratoriums or more time to stay and all this. There's five years before they can even start to put the first soil found on the on the ground. They have to do all kinds of testing to make sure the ground is even suitable, many of the acres, like my farm. I chose to put part of my farm in. Nobody loves the woods anymore than I do. I have two hundred and twenty till of acres. I chose to put a hundred and twenty of that in the solar banks. I chose to keep a hundred of it in agriculture. I'm not touching any of my woods, any of that, none of it. So I'm trying to support three different things here because Dudley truly sat right here in this meeting the other night and guaranteed every one of you. That every single year your taxes are gonna go up by four percent. What I'm seeing is a way. To offset that, and there's facts, non facts out there about what people bring in, tax abatements, all that stuff. Nothing gets started without tax abatements, any kind of industry, it doesn't. I don't care, you know, we've got a couple of places over Beersburg, you've got a couple of places like that. Otherwise, you're relying on people like this gentleman right here to put houses on farming grounds. To get some tax money coming into this county. Right, so they are, when I talked to him, he said, you know, there are certain things I can't talk about either, but he did tell me. You can talk about surety bonds. Some of you was worried about what's gonna happen. If these things go defunct, what's gonna happen? If these things go defunct, what's going to happen? Well, in my contract, I have a guarantee that my land will be put back in the situation where it was before this started. I also know that when these surety bonds are there, if some legal reason they don't do it, I don't know, that would be a suit, but you know, they're willing to put up these bonds to make sure there's money there to get it done. And, and if not, it's my problem, it's not your, you know. Also, uh, went to a study, Bill, your five, your five minutes just went up, if you just want to close with a sentence or two. Yeah, okay. Last thing I want to say, I guess, is about the annex up here. I, when, when I first heard about that, I thought, why are they spending that kind of money on the annex? But I took the time to investigate and I found out about this courthouse, what it's going to cost, and I thought, well, maybe, you know, they're going to have to have someplace to go when they're working on this place or something, I, I don't know. So there's their backup, and I do know that Brendan went out and got a, a grant for a million dollars to offset the cost of it. Uh, and, and people are just beating these, these people don't deserve what they're getting. They're trying to do the best job they can for you, if you don't agree with them, that's fine, you all have the right, you know, to state your opinion. But the poor woman can't even go to church without getting jumped, that's ridiculous.
Thank you, Billy.
Excuse me, I have a question for Mr. Brewer, Mr. Brewer, we're neighbors, I don't know why you're not sending that. How much of your investment is around now?
I'm going to have them right across the road from me and both sides.
Okay, where I'm sitting down, at least went through, I'm going to be stranded on the four sides, I do not want to live in solar field.
You don't know that you're going to open, that's what I said about the testing, people hear what they want to hear.
Saying that as I right now, the neighbors around me assign leases to put up solar fields all the way around me.
Okay.
I do not want to live up like that, I did not ask them.
I understand that.
That's why I'm against the solar.
You have the opportunity, the companies will talk to you.
They are not talking to me.
They haven't even gotten to that point yet, they will talk to you about putting up buffers, they will talk to you about setbacks from your property. They, you know, the trees and leaves are coming out right now, I guarantee you, you can stand out on that Grand Creek Road and a half a mile away where they're helping buy, you can't even hardly see across there right now.
So what's that going to do to my property?
Give on the opportunity to test it, it may not even qualify.
Bring to the air?
Nothing, that was another site, I, I got a, I got a research thing here that went in six states, starting in South Carolina, going across the country and go to California. And of that, they talked about property values, but property values average over the whole thing did fall one point four percent.
No, I'm just worried about our safety when these solar fields are going around.
There is no, I, I looked up again, there is no scientific proof.
No.
Okay, so I'm sorry, my wife won't be able to cut this, there's no scientific proof.
Okay, let, let Sammy take me for proof. Hey, excuse me, don't address your comments to Bill, please address it to us if you want to.
Okay, I'm just going to say I'm against solar fields, so I need to remind you about it. I'm worried about my family's safety, there's something I'm going to say about it.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
My name, Baymore, for the two thousand nine South London West, even for the abandoned Old Brook Township of Bill. I had the opportunity at the council meeting to present a report that I had put together on the classification encoding of Fountain County farm ground and its productivity and revenue generation as a revival to the ERA that was presented. In the process of that research, our current zoning code went into effect August twenty seventh of twenty twenty one. On April twenty first of twenty twenty one, House and Rural Act thirteen forty eight was legislated and it became the law of the land of Indiana on January one, twenty twenty two. It addresses the fact that while we have an agriculture district, we have a business district, we have an industrial district, residential and landfill, and we did include in our plan for those districts commercial, solar, electric systems under agriculture, as thirteen forty eight is, we cannot have the land being agriculture, we have to move that land from a class one hundred to a class eight hundred. There are really only two general sections in the memo and you can get that from your colleagues, I gave them all a copy and I gave a lawyer there a copy of it too. Um, and it came from the Department of Local Government Finance. But it addresses the fact that the land in between the solar panels and around the solar panels cannot be ag, it has to be something else. And the back part of that memo, it said the gazillion little codes of which none of them coincide agriculture, it is some other industry. They have a general commerce and they have commercial and they have a general industrial. But under that code and the way I addressed it with talking to people in the state, we have to reclassify that use of that land from a one hundred to an eight hundred. Doesn't mean that we can't put solar on it as our plan is, but the actual landowners will need to change, get the code class changed from a one hundred to an eight hundred use because we don't have a flat out commercial under our, the twenty eight sections under agriculture. I just, that's, that's something we're going to have to address and figure out how to do. And the only way I can see it under the current zoning is that it's going to have to be a special exemption under that to get it from a one hundred to an eight hundred. Because we all want to get to the thirteen thousand dollar acre because that's tax based, that we then can improve the county with. But we have to change it from a one hundred class, which is straight ag, and of those categories they're in, and there's a good thing, you know, you can talk to them in the assessor's office to one of the ones in the eight hundred class.
Yeah, that's, you, you're talking about, there's a difference between how property is designated for purposes of the planning law and then what you're talking about is the requirements that the assessor has to follow upon um, the category for assess value, have the set for taxes. And the, the planning and zoning classification can be different from the assessed value classification. Uh, those are, those are um, easy to, to, um, it's a, it's a really complicated system, but they, they're usually exclusive. And the, the assessor isn't bound by the planning. It's a set mixed on use, it's a permitted use, so then that may, so the nomenclature or the, the terminology for the zoning ordinance is different from how the assessor has to assess well. So that's exactly what happens once, it's a, if, if you had, somebody was going to, if a, the car wash was permitted in an ad and it's a car wash is built, the year before the car wash is built, it's assessed based on its, its use in that, that assessment year. And then once the car wash is built, then it goes to a commercial use, then it's assessed based on that use and assessed based on, on assessing.
But for tax purposes, we're, for use, the use and use, that's why I'm just bringing up as a topic of discussion. Use and use under what we call use in our, in our zoning, right? You, that is, that's, you can use it, you can put a different use on it and use that, but for tax purposes, in our case, we're wanting to be able to tax it at that thirteen thousand dollars acre.
Right, that's what, that's what happens, I mean, that's.
Yes, but in order to do that, you've got to change its use from ag to commercial.
And the assessor does that under the code of statutes and legislation that apply to assessing for taxes. That doesn't mean that we have to, every, all, every, all that, however many counties have planning and zoning, their planning and zoning classifications don't have track with the assessment codes. It's, it's just.
You, you said. It doesn't have track. Our, ours doesn't.
I understand what you're saying, beach, well, I understand what you're saying.
I'm just saying, it's a point of, it's a point of discussion because ours doesn't say that they have to match. And so since it doesn't say that it has to match, and our zoning code does say that where there is a higher regulation above ours, the higher regulation supersedes ours. And so thirteen forty eight set a higher superseding regulation saying it has to be in this class. And since our code doesn't say that they have to match, we can't just now say they, they have to match because we say they have to match, we have to go by what our code is that we, that we wrote. So if we want to say it has to match, that's fine, we can go back and amend the code and say that it has to match. But as it is right now, massive, magic, what is used for physically and what our tax code use is are two different things. So we can bill, we can bill a car wash on it, but it's still going to change its class from ag and, and the, these people at the Department of Local Government Finance are very clear and they're, they give tons of examples of this little section got changed off to this little subsection. But just straight ag to commercial, it ha, that we have to do that, so that's all I'm saying.
We, okay, thank you, we appreciate all the research you've done and we will work into it. But with our representation from Kent Law Firm, which they do seven counties, municipality, they're very diverse to this, and then we also have representation from Barnes and Doronburg specifically on the solar in Indianapolis, they've done more of these than anyone else in the state of Indiana, just letting you rest, remind you of these. Um, and so it's not, it's not us looking at this, we have great legal representation protecting the county and they're not going to let anything happen that hasn't happened in the other end of my law.
And I, but I asked, this is a certain past, since we've got those great legal minds, they are on our retainer, our tax dollars, since this is really the third, first time that thirteen forty eight and the class from one hundred to eight hundred is then brought up, can we pose this question to the, to our legal representatives and have them give us a report based on those contexts within the law? And what the law says surrounding thirteen forty eight and changing classes in the tax code?
Correct.
That way we can have an authority, not you or not me, but an authority.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
May I, really quick question? When he's talking about the classification and leaving farm ground from twenty to hundred plus acres to thirteen thousand plus acres, who is going to be responsible for the difference of the assessed value on the property, the, the, the taxes?
It depends on the private contract between the.
So I can answer that, it's solar people, they pay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
It's in my governor.
It, it depends on how the company negotiates.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All right, no, it's closed.
So, sorry.
Yeah, our goal's on, I have two staff that serves for now, can anyone, the, the showing how it's trustee and the other, who's the showing how this territory advice that it happens with fires. Um, they are both employed and locked yet and are unable to get away from their job to attend meetings like this in the mornings. So I would like to make a formal request that we move these meetings back to the six o'clock in the evening, so the interested individuals, or at least my son, would be able to attend and have, be able to ask questions and, uh, you know, actually, um, be informed about what this county is doing with respect to the area, so thank you.
Can I address that?
You're the friend.
When I was older, eight years prior, being commissioner, I've been telling you, you know, that you can't really make any.
Well, I need to, thanks for the work.
All right, okay, I'm just saying, I've been in that office nineteen years, nobody did, nobody cared. And I, I did it, I mean, I do see people here that, that do care and I do appreciate that. But, you know, when all these public hearings were going on, I sent out the notices to me, they heard, you know, only thirty people showed up. Nobody cared until last year.
Okay, lately there have, there have hundreds of people here and I, I make another request.
I know, and, and we'll consider it.
At six o'clock in the evening, so those individuals will be able to do, I think.
Why didn't you move it at first?
Because we were paying overtime to county commissioners to come down and offer them a night, and no one else, it wasn't any different. About half the states in Indiana do either morning meetings, afternoon meetings, some do one evening meeting a month, one morning meeting a month. It's just totally after the, whatever the measure you want to do.
It is different across the state, some won't, some will do it on Tuesdays, some have it Thursday.
This is more of a business meeting, to get the payroll signed, get bills paid. Special meetings like the solar should be held at night and have.
And we have had some.
But these particular meetings are to do the business of accounting for the most part. But, and then special meetings like that, which have been in the evenings, have been in the evening.
And, and we don't have a problem with that, but like Tim said, you know, we were getting overtime from several individuals, but it adds up over a while. And when you see that no one was coming up to the evening meetings, you know, a decision was made to just have a new service out, but that's all.
And we will take it under consideration, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Dudley said he'd like to have an evening meeting, evening intervention, to say to, I mean, even Paul Seaton calling, reach out to Ameresco, Orca Chair, all of those, I think you had some. Just, yeah, you can do it, that's what Dudley, he said we.
No, we better get a different meeting sign.
On behalf of, yeah, on behalf of, he decided that everything calling will have to advertise now.
We are now fit and we're alone, anybody else?
Um, Dudley, did I ask that question, that how to be advertised, that? I wanted to know, he said it doesn't have to be advertised, it is a forty eight to seventy two hour. I mean, but he still had, I'm saying she has advertised, but I have to work with about six different vendors now for them to reset and I'm not sure they can do it evening meeting now because they have this on their calendar, on their month. So I'll see what I can do, otherwise it may just stay a joint meeting because they wanted to be there at your meeting to answer questions because they knew some of the counties have questions, unanswered, unanswered questions, or they felt like it was, so they, they did most of their findings, you know, the point was we need to get to the schematic design phase of the annex so that we would know what kind of costs is involved so we can move forward. Yeah, we did well, because. A little more of the. Because we have an architect originally that's sat on this line for a year, so that's no fault of any of ours. When, but I just want people to be aware that we change architectural firms because of that. Right, okay, well, if you want to be interested, we definitely, we say. Otherwise, we may still be enjoying, we can, yes.
One quick question, is there any way that we can have people talk directly to other commissioners or else? I know you guys have done it, I know you've talked to state people and stuff like that, but is there any way that people that have this stuff see what the tax structure does, if it affects negatively or positively, actually get some figures that everybody can actually see, is there any way we can do that?
I have it from Benton County.
That was aggressive, I should have, but the people that didn't want to hear first speak.
Okay, I have it for Benton County, anybody can call Benton County over his office and ask them to, since two thousand eight, there are studies on taxes. since two thousand eight, there are studies on taxes and real estate.
Call White County.
Their real estate has not dropped, they've got windows.
What about White County?
White County, they have, they have solar, um, I've spoken to their, and I'm a development person, several times, he's on the ready board of our region, of the, yes.
Yeah, some of these things go through the top county, do we know what it's going to do, do we have a projection?
Absolutely. They have, Baker Kelly's done the numbers on Ranger, it's on the website. Everybody's taxes will go down in Fountain County and not as much as if you're in the areas that they're actually in. This one out here, Van Vieren and Troy, Troy has the bulk of the panels, taxes will reduce the second they start, uh, producing power and then after the ten year abatement, they have not tripled in the savings because the abatement's going on, but the very first day, the net on our website, the very first day they start. But if I live in Covenant and have known a house, my taxes are going down from the resident of Covenant.
Well, I, I, mine went up eight hundred dollars this year, that's not what I pay, that went up eight hundred bucks.
Anyhow, and after our council meeting, uh, joint meeting, we will release the Baker Kelly findings on this dolphin solar and it is incredible what that probably, what that will do for the county.
All.
Not specific landowners, not whatever, everybody in the county. I'm making a motion closely.
I'll say it, I'll listen favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.